If I could get Jack Wagner to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
If I could go ahead and ask the city clerk to do a roll call vote, a roll call?
Councilmember Gallion.
Present.
Councilmember Hundley.
Here.
Councilmember Aggermonte.
Here.
Councilmember Edwards.
Yes.
Mayor Cook.
Here. I'll go ahead and report on closed session. We gave direction to city staff on all three items. At this part, I'd like to have comments from the public. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. It is recommended that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. Under state law, matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon the city council at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the item comes up for council direction. You may begin.
Thank you. My name is Barbara Hawley. I reside at 325 Gennaro Place, the De Anza Moon Valley Mobile Park here in Sonoma. I have had the opportunity through the years to be before the city council for some similar interests, being a resident of the De Anza Moon Valley Park. So I'm not totally unfamiliar with, you know, being here, but I don't know many on the board, on the council. But I do want to be able to say hello in person and to perhaps get to have, you know, my concerns, and this is in regard to the considerations for the rent control and the quote unquote "affordable," which I prefer to call low income housing because affordable is sort of an interesting word, depending on where you're coming from. So I want to go back a little bit into the years of how I got here in the beginning to the city council, and that was after extensive research to acquaint myself with mobile home or manufactured housing, as it's called today. I acquainted myself with the park sites that accommodated these facilities. And after all that research and gathering up information to be able to make a reasonable decision, I did purchase a home in the De Anza Moon Valley facility in 1994. So I've been a resident there for 21 years. This home, the amenities and the location have provided me with a simple, safe, peaceful, and gratifying lifestyle in this remarkably beautiful city of Sonoma. As with any purchase of a dwelling, it is incumbent upon me to maintain my home to a standard of code and manicure and care for the surrounding rental grounds and pay utility bills. The rent control issues and affordable or low income housing are paramount concerns for us seniors, many on fixed incomes. It behooves me to ask each of you members to become knowledgeable about this type of lifestyle and need. It's my wish to offer my personal knowledge, my experiences, to each of you on whom it is incumbent to make decisions for this population, who indeed do and have continued to provide and sustain volumes of voluntary services to this community beyond their own self-care. I have given cards to the city clerk with my name and phone number if you would like to ask any questions of me at a later time to help you understand the type of living that we have, the type of concerns that we have, and any way that I could help you to become a little more knowledgeable about this. Thank you so much for your time and attention. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Cook and honorary council persons. My name is Ann Collicchidas. I live at 14 Hacienda in Sonoma at Pueblo Serena. And like Barbara, we really, C-O-L-I-C-H-I-D-A-S. Like Barbara, we would like to invite you to ask us any questions that you might have regarding living in the manufactured home communities in Sonoma and about the, some of the matters on the ordinance revision. I am the president of the Sonoma Valley GSMO, but my day job, I'm a gerontologist. So many of these issues of senior living are very close to my heart. We have a pancake breakfast on Monday mornings, every Monday morning. The guys cook and they clean up, and you're welcome to come by any Monday and join us at 9:00 a.m. sharp because by 9:30, we're done. This morning was Monday morning pancakes, and so the talk turned after breakfast to this matter of rent stabilization and automatic, annual automatic increases. It was remarked that it's hard to keep up with the annual increases and with the rent going up and everything else going up. So today I did some research comparing the last five years of the CPI with the, for the Bay Area, with the five years of the Social Security Cost of Living Adjustment. So for the past five years, I found that the average increase in the CPI, which is the adjustment for the, upon which the rent raises are based, the average increase of the CPI was twice that, the Cost of Living Adjustment for Social Security. So each year homeowners find themselves falling behind, and that falling behind accelerates because it's cumulative. So in 2010, for example, and in 2011, there was zero Cost of Living Adjustment for Social Security. So you can see that the 80% CPI that is being discussed is already a significant sacrifice for those living on fixed income. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Gary Hermes. I live at 12 Ramon Street in Rancho de Sonoma. And the question was raised at the study session about how come so many spaces are no longer under rent control? So I'd like to give you a scenario on how that can happen. Say I inherit my aunt's manufactured home, but I live on the East Coast. I've got a family there. I need to take a leave of absence from my job. I need to come to Sonoma, and I need to attend to my aunt's affairs. And I look at her manufactured home, and it's an older model. It needs a new roof. It needs painting. It needs new carpet. Needs a new oven. There's just a lot of work that needs to be done, and I don't have time to mess around with it. The space rent that before my aunt bought it was only $7.75, but after she bought it, of course, it went up 10%, so it went to $8.50, and now it's going up to over $900, $935 to be exact. Since the average Social Security is only $11.80, that really cuts down the market that I can sell to. So here I am. I'm away from my family. I'm away from my work, and I'm paying almost $1,000 while I'm trying to figure out what to do with this place. And the park owner comes to me and says, "Look, I know you're under stress and you're anxious to get home. Why don't I just make you an offer and I'll take it as is?" And it's, I just want to get home. So I take the offer. He in turn hires his own people to fix it up, and then he rents it at market rate. So that's how it happens, and I'd like to leave you with something very graphic. It's an indication of, in Rancho de Sonoma, we've lost almost 40% of our spaces that are no longer, that are being rented now at market rates. I'm going to leave this, if I may, for you to look at later. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. John Kyle, 14 Hacienda, Pueblo Serena. Hi. I'm here to continue the conversation we started last meeting about the nature of mobile homeownership and the rent stabilization ordinance that's going to be under consideration. Last time I spoke about homeowners being co-investors and spending $2 to every dollar of the parks. Let me illustrate with an example from my own experience. This isn't a complaint. I just want you to see an example of how this co-investment thing works. When we bought our place, there was a dual track. There was a typical offer, counter, inspection, escrow process common to many other types of real estate deals. But there was also a, but the land, I'm sorry, but the land underneath wasn't part of the sale, which meant that if we wished to live there, we needed to be approved by management and sign a rental agreement simultaneous to the sale. Now included in the rental agreement were the park rules and regulations, and failure to follow these rules and regulations is a ground for eviction. Yes, you can fully own a home in a mobile park and still be evicted. Our home was sold as is, which is common, and we bought it knowing that we were required to replace the skirting. What is skirting? It's cosmetic. It conceals the support structure and appears beneath the home. It also increases the park's value by lending the appearance of stability, permanence, and good maintenance, and which is why it's specifically measured in the rules and regulation. Cosmetic, not structural, and not cheap. It comes into contact with both the ground and the home, so it must be anchored, supported, insured properly, as well as being weatherproof and pest resistant. In our case, 6,500. That's an example of how homeowners co-invest. We are required to maintain everything on our site, all improvements, the landscaping, the trees, even the drainage. The only way to recoup this investment is through a sales price, which is adversely affected by the allowable space rent. An 80% CPI and a 5% vacancy control to preserve the balance between the parks and the homeowners is a fair solution to that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Cook and Mayor Protem Gallion and councilmember Edwards, Hundley, Aggermonte. Thank you very much for your service to our wonderful city. The subject I would like to discuss today is the founding of the Pueblo of Sonoma. I'm actually making a request, and because of my schedule and because of my slowness and realizing the coming date, I had to do it the way I did, so I apologize for that. I'm leaving the country on Friday. The date is the 24th of June. The Pueblo was founded by General Vallejo on the orders of Governor Figueroa, 24 June, 1835. So this June is our 180th birthday. Despite what you see on some T-shirts and sweatshirts around town, the date of the founding is 1835. I saw one the other day in McCullough's and said 1883. That's an interesting date. It doesn't connect to anything, I don't believe. Anyway, my request to you, and I did send you a packet so you wouldn't be blindsided, is that you issue a proclamation in honor of our 180th birthday on the 24th of June this year. And secondly, that you declare the 24th of June, I said Pueblo Day, I have, I do not care what you call it. It's Sonoma Day, Birthday, Founder's Day, whatever, but I think, I mean, I think you can do that. I've heard a former mayor declare one day forever in perpetuity. I usually don't pronounce that word correctly. Her daughter's birthday from now on, so I would hope you would do something about our city's birthday. So you do not have to respond to me now, but I hope you will do this with my great thanks.
Thank you, Robert. Is there any other comments from the public? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and go back to council for meeting dedications. Is there? I have a meeting dedication. It's my sad duty to mention the death of our vice mayor's mother, Helen Kaiser, and I'd like city record to go that we are presenting this to her. Thank you. With that, I'm going to go ahead and go with presentations. City clerk, we have a presentation of the Cultural and Fine Arts Commission 2015 Student Creative Arts Award to Jeffrey Peterson.
Yes. Cultural and Fine Arts Commissioner Kate Schertz is going to be making that presentation.
The recipient. Every year, it's our great pleasure on the Sonoma Cultural and Fine Arts Committee to be able to listen to, see, or watch the performing artists, the writers, the musicians, the young people of our community who share with us their very special gifts. And this year, we had the honor of having 10 more young people from our community do these presentations for us, and we were all very impressed. But standing out among all of them was someone who hears music in a symphony in his ears. I don't understand how you do this. I don't understand how you hear a viola and a cello and a saxophone and a trombone and all of them come together and make such beautiful music. But I know that this young man does, and he's only 20 years old, and his senior project this year in university will be the writing of a symphony. So I think we have great pride in the Sonoma son, Jeffrey Peterson, and we award to him this year the City of Sonoma Commission on Cultural and Fine Arts Commission Award. Jeffrey, congratulations. Congratulations. And this nice little check that goes with it. Would you like to say something, Jeffrey?
First, I want to get you reenact that so I can get a picture.
Oh, okay.
Stand over here. No, just stand over here. You can hold that. Okay. And let me, okay. All right. Got it. Thank you so much.
And I'd like to get a picture also. Okay.
Nice. Thank you, David.
It takes a lot of training to hear a symphony. We make it look easy. It's not.
He started out playing rock in high school, but he moved over to classical music. Why don't you go over and stand with the mayor?
Okay. One, two, three, cheese. Okay. Great. Thank you.
And if I could have Tom Blackwood come up from Buena Vista? On behalf of my city council members and the city of Sonoma, we are giving a proclamation to the Buena Vista Historic Wine Tool Museum. Whereas in 2011, Jean Charles Bouset purchased the historical Buena Vista Winery in Sonoma, upon which grounds set the first two stone winery buildings constructed in the state of California. And with the desire to ensure the preservation of these historical significant facilities and seeing the damage caused by the 1989 Loma Prieta earthquake, Mr. Bouset immediately began a retrofit program, which is now known as the Champagne Cellars. And that retrofitting this put to a test when the August 24, 2014 Napa earthquake hit. Upon inspection after the quake, seismic engineers stated that the Champagne Cellars would not have survived had it not been for the retrofitting. Mr. Bouset installed a Historic Wine Tool Museum on the third floor of the Champagne Cellars in 2015, featuring the unique presentation of ancient wine tools arranged in artistic patterns upon the stone walls, along with the presentation of videos, photographs, music, and narration that bring the story of wine to life by focusing on the tools. And the Historical Wine Tool Museum is a tool itself educating visitors and raising awareness of the Sonoma wine industry, which is the envy of the world. Whereas the Buena Vista Historic Wine Tool Museum is celebrating its grand opening on this day, 30th of May, 2015, which I will be presenting a proclamation at that event. So therefore, I, David Cook, the mayor of Sonoma, do hereby commend Jean Charles Bouset and his family for their dedication and preservation of the Sonoma history illustrated by the careful preservation of the Champagne Cellars. And I did have a tour of this earlier, and it's magnificent, so I think everybody should go there. It's pretty amazing. Would you like to say a few words?
Can I take a picture? Sure.
Just thank you very much, David, and the council, for the recognition, and we look forward to seeing you all at the Historic Winery. And just note that on May 31st, we are having an open house for the town of Sonoma. It'll be complimentary for the day. We'll be doing tours, tastings, and showing off the property. So please come by and see us, and thank you all for support, and it is just an honor to be a part of this great city and community. So, thank you.
of the city of Sonoma endorsing the Community Realliance Challenge, and that will be mailed to them. With that, we'll go to, go ahead and go to the consent counter, and we'll give a few moments for some public to leave. All items listed on the consent counter are considered to be routine and will be acted upon by a single motion. There will be no separate discussion on any of these items unless members of the council, staff, or public request specific items to be removed for separate action. At this time, council may decide to change the order of the agenda. Is there any council questions? Seeing none, we'll go to public. Seeing none, I will come back. Councilmember Hundley.
I would like to remove item 4B.
4B?
4B.
Is there any other council questions? Do I have a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to, from the consent agenda calendar, to approve 4A, 4C, and 4D.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and we have a second for the consent counter of 4A, 4C, 4D. City clerk?
Councilmember Gallion.
Aye.
Councilmember Hundley.
Aye.
Councilmember Aggermonte.
Aye.
Councilmember Edwards.
Yes.
Mayor Cook.
Aye. Just for public, we actually went ahead and approved the consent counter for 4A, 4C, 4D. And councilmember Hundley, you had, you've had 4B.
Yeah, I have a change to the minutes. On page four, the third section from the top, I want it to be changed to councilmember Hundley asked whether citations could be issued by volunteers.
Okay. Go ahead and go out to public if there's any questions on 4B. Seeing none, I will come back to the council for a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
And I'll second.
City clerk?
Councilmember Gallion.
Aye.
Councilmember Hundley.
Aye.
Councilmember Aggermonte.
Aye.
Councilmember Edwards.
Yes.
Mayor Cook.
Aye. For public, we just went ahead and approved 4B on the consent counter. Number five, city council as a successor agency, approval of the portions of the minutes of May 4, 2015, city council meeting pertaining to the successor agency. Is there any council questions? Seeing none, we will go to public. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for discussion and action. Vice Mayor Gallion.
I'd like to go ahead and approve the portion of the minutes of May 4 of the city council meeting pertaining to the successor agency.
I'll second.
Having a motion and a second, city clerk?
Councilmember Gallion. Aye.
Councilmember Hundley. Aye.
Aggermonte.
Aye.
Councilmember Edwards.
Yes.
Councilmember, Mayor Cook.
Aye. For public, we just approved the portions of the minutes of May 4, 2015, city council meeting pertaining to the successor agency. Number six, public hearings, discussion, consideration, and possible action to conduct the first reading of an ordinance of the city of Sonoma requiring the licensure of tobacco retailers and amending Chapter 7.25 of the municipal code. City Major Gibanato?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Cook, members of the city council. On March 16th, staff presented an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City of Sonoma Requiring the Licenseur of Tobacco Retailers and Amending Chapter 7.25 of the Municipal Code for a First Reading. Following public comment and council discussion, staff was directed to make certain changes and which included changes, the sales of tobacco retailing businesses between relatives and related companies from being prohibited unless the sale for which of significant purpose is avoiding the effect of the violation of this ordinance. Number two, addition of a definition of pipe tobacco to clarify what tobaccos may be sold with flavors. Number three, the addition of the requirement that the identification required to be examined contain a photograph. Number four, permits flavored cigars and chewing tobacco snuff in packages containing five or more units. Number six, permits flavored single cigars for which the retail price exceeds $5. And then in addition, through the city attorney's office recommendation, we added an appeal process for an applicant who is denied a permit. So these amendments have been incorporated into the draft of the ordinance, and the final ordinance is presented tonight for your first reading. As you are aware, the county of Sonoma also is working on a tobacco retailer licensing ordinance. The county board of supervisors is currently in the process of reviewing a draft of their TRL ordinance for the unincorporated areas of Sonoma County. Since the county has not completed its hearings and potential changes to their draft ordinance, staff is recommending that the city move forward with the first reading tonight without delay and anticipate the county adopting an ordinance. If future modifications would be necessary to align with the county's ordinance, staff will bring forward suggested amendments, and the ordinance could be modified in the future when the county does finally adopt their ordinance. This tobacco retailer licensing ordinance, as you're aware, implements a process to obtain a tobacco retailer license from the city, and that annual fee of $246 collected under this program will fund the compliance monitoring program. So at this time, staff is recommending that the council conduct the first reading of the ordinance requiring this licensure of tobacco retailer. And we believe that time is of the essence as this is a critical issue. Deputy City Attorney Valerie Pastol is here. She was the lead in developing this draft ordinance, and we are both here to answer questions. That concludes staff's comments.
Thank you. Do we have any council questions? Seeing none, I will go ahead and open up public comment.
I'm sorry, sir. I'm really new to this. Because I can learn from you. Sure. Mayor Cook, members of the council, my name is Brian Vaughn. I'm with the county department of health services, the policy, director of health policy planning and evaluation for the county. Just here, wanted to recommit our support and partnership on your TRL. Just tell you that from the county health department, that very supportive of what you're doing here and taking the lead on this. And just a follow-up on the comments made previously, that the board is currently considering doing a tobacco retail license. They heard their first conversation on this on April 7th, and as was mentioned, that they are, some of the key feedback on that presentation was that to work with, to go out and to work with the cities, particularly on two items, the minimum pricing and minimum pack sizes. So we are very supportive of you obviously moving forward here in the city, but want to leave the door open down the line, as was mentioned, that we can also come together perhaps when the county is ready to move forward with their tobacco retail license, that we can move together jointly, obviously to make it easier for retailers and not create a patchwork, which we sometimes know is necessary, but I think we can do a lot of efforts around that regardless of whether you pass it now or down the line. Thank you.
Thank you.
What does reading mean? Sorry, I want to know what it means by having a first reading.
Yeah, I'll, please. Tonight, what we're doing is we're, we're having our first reading of the ordinance that we direct the staff to prepare for us.
What does it mean, reading? Just to let everybody know what it is that you're proposing?
It's part of the haring process.
Okay. My name is Joe Wad, Honran. I've been, sure, ma'am. Last name is Honran. H-O-N as in Mary, R-A-N as in Nancy. I'm kind of a quiet part of the community for the last 10 years. Prior to moving here to Sonoma, I've had businesses in the East Bay and Roanoke Park. We had a lot of consumers from Sonoma coming to Roanoke Park, and I know it's a negative thing. I was the first to recommend some type of a licensing for tobacco retailers. This was 10 years ago when I first came to Sonoma. We had a lot of customers that were coming to the Roanoke Park location, living in Sonoma, that wanted us to have a location here. And so I said, well, let me first go to the city. I don't want to be, you want to know your neighbors, you know, you want to know, do they? they want you around? If they don't want you there, then you don't need to be there. So I came to the city of Sonoma for a couple weeks, just asking different individuals, going business to business, asking them, coming to City Hall and asking them, what do you think of this? Because I smoke and I don't want to smoke. Most smokers would rather quit. And so anything that we can do, instead of just having laws, let's have some funds going to a program that's beneficial to those who actually smoke. I know there's probably not too many people here, but there's 20% of general population that smokes. So if you're talking about the city of Sonoma, that's close to 2,000 people. Here, there's only 60 people in this room, maybe 75 counting everybody else. It's a large portion, but smokers want to hide. They know it's a bad habit, so they're not going to come out and talk about it. My job, the only reason I'm here, is because they vax me too. And I'm sure, and I didn't even, I don't even know, I've tried to go online and see what the ordinance states. I will give you any feedback you need. I've been in this industry for a while. I recently moved to something a little bit more positive, which is fruits and vegetables. I feel good about that. This business, I really don't even enjoy anymore, but I do feel that it is providing a service, and what I mean by that is, the cost is high, and those that smoke will continue to smoke sadly. And on average, each individual saves about a dollar per pack where we're at. And the way we're able to do so is, you don't want to know numbers, it's boring, forget about it. My whole reason of being here is I want to work with you. We do need some type of, a license program to make sure, where I'm at, I don't know if you've known, I've been here for 10 years, but where my location is, it's hidden. I'm not out there where people can drive by and say, hey, that's a tobacco store. I did that intentionally. Fifth Street West Plaza, Pearls Diner, people know that. I'm right behind, I mean, nobody sees me. And I try to be responsible. When kids come in, and I, see, when you work in this industry, people smoke the same thing daily, so you get a habit of what they're buying. And for those that come in and don't buy what they normally buy, and this happened several years ago, who's it for? You know, I don't mean to question people, but, and I, I've actually followed them outside, went around the corner, because it makes me look bad. And I try to be, you'll see, there's no violations on my record, none at all. And I support the decoy ones coming in and checking it out. I just want to be a part of the process, basically. I feel like I do have some knowledge and background information of how to make this a better proposal, and I'd love to do so. So please just include me in this. I'm sorry, I've been, I have mango farms overseas, so I've been tending to those, and I just came back about a month and a half ago. So this is kind of new. I wasn't here March 16th, when we had the first meeting. I came back on the 25th. But going forward, I see time is running out probably too. I just want to be a part of this process. Please, let's make it right. Let's not rush to get it done, but I'm with you. Let's make it efficient and make it proper, please.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. My name is Neen Garcia, and I'm the owner of Vacaville Vaporium, a small business in Vacaville, California, that has no ties with big tobacco whatsoever. Although my company has no financial interest in Sonoma, I am here to urge you to vote no on the proposed flavor ban, as it is currently written in the proposed ordinance. As an ex-smoker myself, I know how difficult it is to get away from carcinogen and tar-ridden combustible cigarettes. After finding an alternative without these harmful components, I have made it my personal mission to help others switch to a safer alternative, as I have. The flavors that you propose to ban are the very things that help people switch from combustible cigarettes and are saving lives. I strongly urge you to open dialogue with the small businesses and consumers within your city, and do your homework before making arbitrary and uninformed decision that will indubitably drive tax dollars out of your city. The vapor industry has never and will never market to children, and many vape shops, including mine, participate in the Age to Vape Program, where we are vigilant in checking ID to ensure that we do not sell to minors. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get a show of hands of how many individuals are going to speak tonight? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Stefan Dedak, and I'm here before you tonight in my capacity as the co-president of the Northern California Chapter of SVADA, which stands for the Smoke Free Trade Alternatives Association. I'm here as an unpaid volunteer and have never taken any payment from either the vapor industry or the tobacco industry. We're all solidly in favor of prohibiting sales to minors, as evidenced by our industry's participation in the Age to Vape, Age Verification Program. We're also very appreciative of the city's concern and willingness to step up efforts to protect the public's health from the death and disease caused by combustible tobacco. Unfortunately, it appears that the council favors those deadly products over an alternative that even Tobacco-Free California considers to be much safer, namely, the vapor products that this proposed ordinance will impact severely and disproportionately. The proposed ordinance resembles and reflects requirements for deadly combustible tobacco products, yet the city seems to want to make them applicable to a safer alternative. Trying to force the rectangular peg into the circular hole might not be the most sensible approach to what the city is attempting to accomplish within the spirit of disordinance. We would also like to register our very serious concerns regarding the last time this ordinance was brought in front of and discussed by the City Council. We believe that Mayor Cook may have neglected protocol when repeatedly expressing his personal dislike of vapor products, or as I quote, "I don't like vapors," while at the same time expressing, "I'm okay with the cigars." The influence that comes from having a strong community leadership role in the capacity of mayor should not be wielded in such a way that it sets the stage for an entire city council to make decisions that are legally arbitrary and capricious. Decisions need to be made on merit and not personal bias. None of the small businesses that make up the vapor products industry have any ties to tobacco companies, and the vapor products do not contain tobacco. It would be like referring to a caffeinated soda as a coffee product. Yet it appears the city council wants to treat these businesses as if they are tobacco companies. Prohibiting the sale of flavored vapor products is so far out in the realm of the absurd that I don't know where to start, especially when you consider that a wide variety of choice of flavors is instrumental to those who are switching from deadly combustible tobacco use to vapor products. Is this city council sending the message, please stop using flavored safer products and go out and buy a cigar? We respectfully request that you vote no on this ordinance, or work with the industry stakeholders and the users of these products, as it is after all, their health that is at stake. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could get, get a row of people coming up to speak.
Good afternoon. My name is Peggy Bastress. I just happened to be out walking my dog, and I saw a lot of gentlemen in the parking lot smoking, and was reminded about the agenda today.
Excuse me, could I get you to spell your last name, please?
Bastress, B-A-S-T-R-E-S-S. And I'm just here, I signed the ordinance, and I was encouraged to come, and I also commented once to the person that was passing the ordinance around about how I often see on Level Valley, where the Sebastiani picnic tables are, lots of young folks smoking, smoking hookah cigarettes, chewing also, lots of litter left afterwards. And I'm just here to support the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council members. My name is Jan Erickson, and I reside at 4A2 Engler Street here in Sonoma. I'm coming tonight in reflection. As a sophomore in high school, a sophomore in college, and then as a new bride, I lost grandparents, grandmother first, grandfather, and then my aunt, who were highly, highly addicted to nicotine. Even in the emergent, or in the long-term care, under oxygen, my grandmother is asking for a cigarette. So that has a place in my memory that really hurts. As a long-term educator, I'm recently retired after 41 years in education. I'm very concerned about the children of Sonoma Valley. So I'm speaking to you in support of this ordinance. When I think back at my grandparents and my aunt, you know, what, how did that happen? What was the enticement? And then you think about the movies, you think about even like the Isle of Lucy show I saw the other night, and there's smoke in there on TV. So there was a big push by the tobacco industry to get people hooked on nicotine. I'm very concerned about that for our young people. I again want to tell you that I really would like you to pass this ordinance. I really want you to look at those flavored smoking devices that are again a tool to pull kids into being addicted to nicotine. So on behalf of the children of the valley, I urge you to vote for this ordinance, and I thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Hi, my name is Ed Wolf, that's W-O-L-F-F. Sonoma is seeking to try and regulate electronic cigarettes before the city understands what they are and how their usage is. I've attended both of the FDA workshops on electronic cigarettes, and the overwhelming evidence submitted by the doctors and the researchers alike is that electronic vaping products is far safer than smoking combustible cigarettes. In fact, the actual risks are speculative, and they, there's to date been no demonstrated harms to the person that is using a vapor product. And I'm sure if you were to talk to treating doctors, you would find the same thing. Has a doctor ever told you that a vaping product has affected their patient? Because that's something you should look at. As drafted, the rules, all risks to children exist with every product, and control of, and control of access of adult products is far different than stopping a product from being sold to adults. Forcing vapor shops to close is not the right answer. If a simple law could be made to, that could be done to help children, we would have not an underage drinking problem today, and we know that we still do have underage drinking. As drafted, the new rules will stop vapor shops from selling these flavored products, as will also Walmart and other stores be restricted. The changes don't make sense the way the bill is drafted, because you are restricting a product flavor in a cigar if it's under $5, but if it's over $5, you don't care. Or if a cigar is sold in a pack of five, it doesn't make sense either. You restrict it only if it's less than five. And you also, for cigarette, for pipe tobaccos, if it has a flavor, that's a freebie too. Nobody cares about that. That's how the law is drafted now. It doesn't make sense, because those are not reasonable restrictions. They're not going to be effective restrictions. However, chewing tobacco, let's see, carbonated Sonoma Valley wines appeal to children, and that's because they're bubbly and they appear to be like soda pop. And we know that's true. We know that underage drinkers begin often with champagnes. Vapors are wine drinkers, and they also pair vaping products with wine often. What I can say is, if Sonoma does pass this law, that vapors across the nation will attempt to organize a boycott of Sonoma Valley wines. We will talk to bars, we will talk to stores, and we'll especially talk to restaurants, and we will get the message out that Sonoma Valley wines should not be purchased, and we'll use social media, and we'll use everything we can. We'll say, go to Napa, go to Bonny Doon, go to anybody else besides Sonoma. That will be the message out. Now, will it work? I don't know. But I can promise you that I will try to make that message known because of this law, and we'll use every social network possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and your address, please.
My name is Carrie Hess, and I live in Redding, California. My husband and I own NorCal Vape in Redding, and I don't have any financial ties to the city of Sonoma, nor have I ever taken one penny or never will take any money from big tobacco. I'm opposed to this ordinance for several reasons. While I wholeheartedly agree with restricting access to minors, this ordinance banning flavors of e-liquid is not the right way to go about it. Adults like flavors, especially flavored e-liquid to use in vapor products. Cigarettes taste disgusting, and I know because I'm a former smoker, so why would anyone want to vape a tobacco flavor? It's the worst thing I've ever tried. The fact that flavors are available make vaping enticing to adults. If you pass this ordinance to include a flavor ban, you're supporting big tobacco. Even Dr. Stanton Glance, a professor at UCSF who's spent years studying electronic cigarettes, who's also the biggest opponent to the tobacco industry that I know, states, "There is no question that if you are an established smoker who switched entirely to e-cigarettes, you're going to be exposing yourself to a lower level of toxins. In the interest in the health of your constituents, you should be encouraging the use of electronic smoking devices, otherwise known as vapor products, instead of encouraging them to keep smoking deadly combustible cigarettes." Even the liquor industry has flavored liquor. Smirnoff has over 32 flavors, including fruity flavors, confections, which include churros, marshmallow, root beer floats, and ice cakes, and these are all geared towards adults. Flavors appeal to adults. In the two years that my husband and I have been in business, we sell thousands of bottles of e-liquid per month, and less than 5% total combined are made up of the sale of tobacco and menthol flavors. Adults like flavors, and you have a unique opportunity to allow access to products that, according to science, are 95% less harmful than combustible cigarettes. Do not pass this ordinance.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council members. My name is Jeff Hess. I am Carrie's husband. We do own NorCal Vape, and like she said, you know, we are all about not allowing underage people to vape. I think there's a misconception about the fact that like maybe electronic cigarettes are geared towards kids. They're geared towards adults to stop killing themselves and to stop smoking. I like bubble gum. I like gummy bears. Do you? Do you like Snicker? Do you like marshmallow and, and other things? You know, of course we do. I'm opposed to Agenda Item 6A for several reasons. First, tobacco retailers are already required to obtain a tobacco license from the California State Board of Equalization, so therefore there's no reason for them to have a second tobacco permit. Second, electronic smoking devices or vapor products are not tobacco products. They do not contain tobacco leaves, which when lit, put off deadly tar or carcinogens thus. They should not be classified as a tobacco product. You don't see the nicotine patch being referred to as the tobacco patch, or nicotine gum referred to as tobacco gum. By classifying electronic smoking devices as tobacco products, you are giving the illusion that they are as harmful as combustible products, and science has proven that this is not true. By passing this ordinance, you are banning all flavored e-liquid. Here are just a few of the studies that prove vapor products to be healthier alternatives to cigarettes. Peering through the mist, from Drexel University School of Public Health, 2014, which conducted more than 9,000 observations of electronic cigarettes, the calculations reveal that there was no evidence of potential exposure of e-cigarette users to contaminants that are associated with risk to health. Another one, Safety Evaluation and Risk Assessment of Electronic Cigarettes as Tobacco Cigarette Substitutes, by Dr. Farcelinos on Anasis Cardiac Surgery Center, 2014. Currently available evidence indicates that electronic cigarettes are by far less harmful, by far less harmful alternative to smoking, and significant health benefits are expected in smokers who switch from tobacco to electronic cigarettes. Another, Are E-Cigarettes a Good Thing?, by Dr. Frank Domino, University of Massachusetts Medical School. The inhalants from ECs or electronic cigarettes were found to be cytotoxic secondary to the flavorings used, often from roasted coffee beans, but this was 800 times less cytotoxic than tobacco smoke. Another, Nicotine Levels and Presence of Selected Tobacco-Derived Toxins in Tobacco- Flavoring Electronic Cigarettes Refill Liquids, by Dr. Farcelinos of Anasis Cardiac Surgery Center, 2015. The total TSNAs and nitrates which are derived from the tobacco plant were present at levels 200 to 300 times lower in 1 milliliter of natural extract of tobacco liquids compared to 1 gram of tobacco products. Electronic cigarette liquids contain far lower levels of tobacco-derived toxins compared to tobacco products. Additionally, flavors keep people from smoking deadly carcinogenic cigarettes. Who here vapes? Who here uses tobacco flavors? Who here might switch back to cigarettes if they didn't have, if all the flavors were banned? I probably would.
You have, you have about 10 seconds.
I'm fully aware of that. Thank you. Do you want to encourage smoking? Do you want to support big tobacco? If your answer is no, then you should not support this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. My name is Tiffany Neff, and I live here in town on Brockman Lane. I have two daughters who are, one's at high school and the other's at Davis, and I observe very often young people smoking, and now more and more vaping. So we do have a huge problem here in Sonoma, and probably nationwide. I am sorry that these retailers feel like this ordinance is too restrictive for them. I think they need to find another solution, but I'm encouraging you to adopt this ordinance. We need to protect our kids and the citizens of Sonoma, and it can start right here. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and your address.
Good evening. My name is Mary Jo Williams. I live at 417 Montini Way in Sonoma. I'm a parent, local resident. My husband... My husband is a firefighter here in the city of Sonoma, and I'm here in support of this ordinance. I just want to make a couple of points. One is that the state of California, the Department of Health Services calls vaping an electronic nicotine delivery device. They don't call it vaping, they call it for what it is. It has nicotine in it. It's also, I wanted to make the point that the claim being made that vaping helps with cessation, there is a product that's available, and it's the only one that is approved by the FDA. It's safe, and there's no flavors or marketing hype. And it's called a Nicotral Inhaler. And this is a safe alternative for people who are wanting to quit. So I thank you, and I urge you to support this ordinance.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Well, I just want to start off with something I've been hearing. Are we talking about harm reduction?
Could you please state your name?
I'm sorry. Michelle Escobar McGary. And I'm a MC, capital G-A-R-R-Y. And I am a cessation specialist with the Center for Wellbeing and the current chairperson for the Tobacco Coalition here in Sonoma County. And so back to what I was saying, harm reduction through electronic devices? I don't think so. Possibly harm shift? Yes. After seeing more even this morning, I'm sorry that I cannot actually tell you what article it was, but there are a couple articles that even came out this morning that I had no time to print. They're talking about the shift being even more unhealthy kind of shift because there is more and more intake happening on a day-to-day basis with your electronic smoking devices. But let's talk about really what's going on as well as for a person who smokes or uses these devices, is that they are using them as a palliative. And the drug is nicotine that they're also using. They use it for stress, they use it for stressful situations, and this is a pattern that has been established since they were young. I, a former smoker, began smoking at 15 and smoked 14 years until I was 29. So I can speak from experience. And I did teach myself that I would calm myself down if I just smoked a cigarette. Nothing has changed, really. A person who uses nicotine or electronic smoking devices is doing the same thing. We're talking about emotions here. In order for a person to quit, really what we need to talk about and really need to explore is the reasons behind it, and usually it's emotions. So there's a peeling of the onion that needs to take place in these people's lives. It isn't switching from something that, we'll just say, smells better than your commercials tobacco cigarettes. We're talking about highs and lows brought on by people who have learned to deal with their stressful situations by using a coping mechanism. Yes, somebody mentioned that there are a lot of people who would want to quit smoking. I could tell you that's 95% of people who smoke want to quit smoking. Only 40% of them really take the first steps. And because this electronic smoking, oh, sorry, electronic smoking devices have been so highly marketed as methods to smoke, as a young person smelling this awesome, great smelling thing, yeah.
You have 10 seconds.
It lures them. It lures them. So as a person who started smoking at a young age of 15, I could tell you, if I was 15 these days, it would probably call to my attention as well.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council Members. I'm excited that we're to this point. My name is Lori Bremer, B-R-E-M-N-E-R. I live at 18583 Malady Lane, and I'm a small business person here in Sonoma and have been for over 18 years. I'm also a volunteer with the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network and an active Relay for Life volunteer here in Sonoma. There's over 1,500 participants in Relay for Life here. We're all excited about this and ready to help with outreach and education. We definitely want to see this passed. There's a lot that we don't know about electronic cigarettes. What we do know are things that are published, for example, in the New England Journal of Medicine, that what they're breathing, what they exhale, contains formaldehyde. We can assume that's probably not good for them to breathe long-term. New England Journal of Medicine projects that it could possibly be 5 to 15 times more hazardous than combustible cigarettes. There's a lot we don't know yet. One thing I think we all agree on is we don't want our kids doing it. We don't want our kids' lungs being sacrificed because science hasn't caught up with the industry. Combustible tobacco products cause 440,000 deaths a year in this country. Might vaping be somewhat less dangerous? We don't really know, but less than 440,000 is still a lot. Talking about flavors for adults, I can see some of the points made. However, when I look at these e-juices that came from a 15-year-old's backpack, a friend of mine in Sonoma gave me this, I just can't believe that this little cartoon with a unicorn on it and the flavor called Unicorn Puke is aimed at an adult. The Unicorn Puke vial, by the way, proudly proclaims "handcrafted in Sonoma County." Aren't we all proud of that? There's Pineapple Express, there's Jolly Rancher, there's Teddy Bear and Sugar Bear, all kinds of flavors that those names and the designs are not aimed at adults. The reason it's important to have minimum pack sizes, you guys saw this picture the last time I was here in front of you, the small, little flavored packs for $1.49, very enticing to kids. Another picture that I brought copies of for you guys this time, which breaks my heart, is not from Sonoma, but these are three 15 and 16-year-olds from Sonoma at Fairfield Vape sampling at the counter. One of their mothers gave it to me and said, "Show this to somebody who can help me." And Fairfield Vape knows that there's really no reason for them not to post this on their own Instagram account. That's where this picture came from. Because if they get caught, it's a slap on the wrist because Fairfield doesn't have a tobacco retail licensing ordinance. Sonoma doesn't at the moment either. But you guys can change that starting tonight, and I so appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Yes, you can only speak once. Sorry.
Good evening, Mayor Cook and council members. My name is Eric Beal, and I am the Director of Public Relations for Digital Cigs in Santa Rosa and advocate for small and medium-sized local businesses in the vapor product market. These smoke-free, tobacco-free, and often nicotine-free products are not tobacco products, and demonizing them as such sends a bleak message to California's 3.6 million-plus adult smokers. First, I want to bring up the youth issue because this is something the council and the entire vapor product industry couldn't agree on more. It's something that Dr. Millman from the Sonoma County Health Services and I have had an understanding on, that while protecting our youth is of the utmost importance, we should not imperil the thousands of citizens that have found success with vapor products. Just because a youth may try an electronic cigarette before tobacco cigarettes does not mean that the e-cig acted as the gateway product. Correlation does not equal causation. Youth have also inhaled oxygen before smoking, but that doesn't mean that oxygen was that gateway drug either. Second, almost a year ago today, FDA Center for Tobacco Products Director Mitch Zeller stated before a Senate Health Committee hearing that, quote, "If we can get all those people to completely switch all of their cigarettes for one of these non-combustible vapor products, that would be good for public health." Moreover, Derek Yock, former head of the World Health Organization's Tobacco-Free Initiative, quotes the Royal College of Physicians, "Switching completely from tobacco to e-cigarettes achieves much the same in health terms as does quitting smoking and all nicotine use completely. Furthermore, risks associated with passive exposure to e-cigarette vapor are far less than those associated with passive exposure to cigarette and cigar smoke." Cigar smoke, Mr. Mayor. This council's definition of vaping, bootstrapping it to smoking tobacco, makes about as much sense as wine being called an alcoholic product, and the businesses with beer and wine licenses now require full alcohol permits. Just as nicotine is present in both combustible tobacco and vapor products, by that logic, we should probably all now wear motorcycle helmets while we drive our cars because both methods of transportation use gasoline. This council's prior statements regarding vapor are alarming, indefensible, and demonstrate a remarkable and thorough disregard for the welfare of smokers to whom these devices are aimed. Most derelict in the views, Mr. Mayor, is that you refuse to even acknowledge the tobacco harm reduction aspect with any measurement of objectivity or diligence. Is this council at all aware that right now Santa Rosa City Council has chosen to bifurcate tobacco and vapor definitions and embrace tobacco harm reduction? I urge this council to take the same approach as your fellow county legislators by embracing vapor products and voting no on this ordinance, or at least striking any language addressing vapor products, except for those lines that protect and curtail youth access to tobacco. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Hello. Greg Taylor, Taylor &amp; Norton Wine Merchants and cigars, 19210 Sonoma Highway. I'm one of the tobacco retailers on this list. I'm actually in that business that everybody likes to say, "Oh, yeah, I've driven by there 1,000 times in the last 20 years," but I've never been in there. That's me. Probably said it, right? So I just wanted to bring up a couple of things on this list. I don't sell vapes or even cigarettes or flavored anything, really. Cigars, strictly cigars. But a couple of things that pertain to me, one would be the price, kind of what seems to be an arbitrary price issue on individual cigars, which is what I sell. And the other is the self-service display. And is that I have probably the only walk-in cigar humidor in Sonoma. That would affect me and probably just me in Sonoma. But preventing people from going in and looking at their cigars and choosing them is kind of like preventing people from going to the produce department and picking up a piece of fruit and squeezing it and smelling it. That's kind of what you do with fine cigars, is you pick them up and feel them and smell them. In all the years that I've had the humidor, I could say with all the thousands of customers that have been in there, I've never had one single person under 18 years old come in and try to buy a cigar, $5 or under $5. I think the cheapest cigar I have is about $2.50 right now. I don't see that I've ever seen that as a problem. I see teenagers and high school kids and younger smoking cigarettes and the vape and smoking pot, a lot of pot. But I don't really see any kids smoking cigars. You don't see many kids walking around with double Coronas or Robustos hanging out of their mouth. It's not something that's common. Matter of fact, my girlfriend's 16-year-old son, who goes to a very big school in San Francisco, over 2,000 students, I asked him, I wanted his opinion, and he said, "Oh, yeah, everybody's smoking pot, all doing the e-cigs and the vape." He said, "Who wants to smoke a cigar? It stinks. It smells. Plus, who wants to buy a cigar for $3 or whatever, and if the dean's after you, you got to pitch it in the trash? That's a lot of money. And we don't want to deal with that." So I think some of these things are a little bit arbitrary, especially those two particular things and the one with the self-serve. It would be very inconvenient for my customers, who are also part of the public at-large in Sonoma. So it'd be inconvenient for them for me to have to go and hand them one product at a time, take it back from them and put it back on the shelf, hand it back to them. I don't think that would be in their best interest. If you want to regulate smoking in public places or regulate smoking in general, fine. But something like that, I think, is a big inconvenience. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Good evening, Council. Mayor Cook, right off the bat, I want to ask you a question.
Could you state your name?
I'm sorry. Lawrence Wilber from Santa Rosa. Quick question, do you still dislike vapors? Or are we cool now? We okay with you? Or is that what we're talking about tonight?
I won't be answering your questions at this point.
I think it's fair to ask the council why it's okay that you're making cigarettes and actual tobacco products more available. And yet you're restricting and demonizing a product that's proven to be a successful harm reduction substitute. Trying to enforce restrictions on vapor products is as good as marketing actual tobacco products. To me, it seems certain by, you know, country mile that it's safer for me. I've been smoke-free, I want to say, two years now, almost two years. What got me off of it was the choice of flavors. It wasn't because I wanted to just have a tobacco flavor. To me, those are disgusting. Anyway, what I really, really came here to say was that with so many conflicting arguments from the same institutions that society looks to for research on health risk and benefits of cutting-edge chemicals aimed at treating illnesses and diseases, what hubris it is that the Sonoma City Council is ready to make such a bold judgment of a product that it doesn't sound like a lot of people know a lot about, including myself. I know that it's safer for me. I know that when I tried quitting before, I was fine. I felt great. I had lungs back, and then I'd eventually go back to it. When I started vaping, that was it. And that's all I really have to say, actually. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Evening, council members. Mayor, my name is Jonathan Mosblech. I'm from Santa Rosa. I can. You know, I don't think anyone's here to argue about tonight harm reduction or what's a safer product. I think that even with the experts in the field, they agree that electronic cigarettes are a safer alternative. But here tonight, we're here to talk about bundling in flavors and getting them out of Sonoma itself. And I was sitting here pondering, you know, where are your residents going to go to get flavors that they want? And where's that tax revenue going to go? I mean, you're one of the few places that's even attempting to do this at this point. And when I quit smoking, it was because of the flavors, and that's what a lot of people have said. Last year, I moved to another state and obviously another city where I had a limited availability of vapor products. In my second week there, I bought a pack of cigarettes. And I smoked for another four months after quitting for almost two years, and then I had to start all over again, went some shops opened up in that small area, that, you know, obviously I was able to get tobacco flavors at maybe a convenience store or something like that. But, you know, there were manufacturers that were outside of this nation, and it's not a quality product that's, you know, like a local product that's created here in Sonoma County. I met a lot of those vendors. I'm not attached to any vendor. I'm not, I don't work for any vendor. I work in the culinary industry. You know, vaping, I'm not going to say it's necessarily saved my life, but it's made my life better. It's made people around me. I mean, no one coughs around me. I don't cough. I can run. I didn't gain a bunch of weight when I quit smoking because I went straight into vaping. I don't binge eat. I don't use that as a crutch for things. So vaping helped me, and the flavors helped me. And I don't see why you would possibly want to take flavors away from people that, you know. Ultimately, if kids are getting a hold of this, isn't that parental accountability? I mean, if your kid picked up a gun somewhere, isn't that, you would tell him not to pick that up. Why don't you tell him not to pick up an e-cigarette? I've never, ever had a kid come up to me and try to get a hold of my e-cigarette stuff. I've never had one ask me to buy something. Lots of kids in my neighborhood. So it sounds like a parental accountability issue, like a lot of the other issues we have today. But bundling in with this ordinance to have everything else, you're just driving your customers into another tax area. You're going to lose your revenue. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman. How you doing? Mike Scott with 7-Eleven Corporation. And I just wanted to, I'm not here to argue any points with you, I'm just here to, like we've done, is try to help understand and understand some of the issues. I know last time we were here, we had some problems with packaging, and there was some debate on the panel about what's in some packages and what's in not. So I was just here to help. I know we're working with the county. Next week, we're doing a meeting as well, just to try to further our relationship and see how we can help with some of the other retailers, with some of our computer-based training and some of those type of things, so that, you know, we can actually make sure that we're doing what we're supposed to do here and make sure that youth do not smoke. And so that's one of the things that we want to make sure we, you guys know we're still here to lend a hand. here to lend a hand in any way we can.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any other public comment?
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Elizabeth Emerson, and I'm a local resident, not representing any organization. A lot of my neighbors are really excited about what you're doing here. They're really supporting it because they have children and teens. And to speak to the comment that the California Tobacco Free's, Tobacco Free California's website promotes e-cigarettes over tobacco, I've been on that website many times, even today. There was never anything like that on that website. In fact, the Public Health Department of the State of California sent out a health advisory treating this as an emergency, that so more youth are actually using e-cigarettes than tobacco. And why they sent out the public health advisory is partly because of all of the other chemicals in addition to the highly addictive nicotine, which is really damaging to a developing brain for an adolescent, because it can take until early twenties for some, for the brain to fully develop. And 10 of these are on California's Prop 65 list of chemicals known to cause cancer, birth defects, reproductive harm. And when these aerosolized particles are inhaled into the lungs, they cause lung inflammation and tremendous tissue damage, not only to the people who are vaping, but to those around them. And that there's a number of studies that have been put out by UCSF and UC Berkeley about this. Additionally, the, you know, the concern about the flavored, the whole thing about the flavors for young people, they consider those to be like training tool, training wheels. The flavors help to mask the harshness. It makes it a more soothing experience, either with the cigarrillos, the small cigars, or with electronic smoking devices. And the Journal of Adolescent Health said that two out of every five teen smokers are using those flavored little cigars and cigarrillos, and CDC is very concerned about them because it's drawn these kids into lifelong addiction. And so there's, Sonoma is not alone. Over, over 94 communities in California have taken steps, ordinances just like this. So I just want to thank you on behalf of all my neighbors for having the courage to look at this and join those other 94 communities.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment? Seeing none, I'm going to come back to council for discussion and action. Councilmember Hunley.
Thank you. So one of the truths that only seemed to be acknowledged towards the end in the discussion over what's healthier, is it vaping? Is it better than smoking? But the fact is, at the heart of it all, is that we're talking about nicotine here, and it's a very addictive thing. And for the person that made the metaphor to it being like, "Oh, well, people try oxygen, and e-cigarette doesn't do the same thing." No, it's delivering a highly addictive substance, and we've decided it's doing in a way that's more attractive to kids. So I have supported this journey towards having this retail license ordinance, because I hear the concerns of parents in the community, and I support specifically protecting our kids from being addicted to any kind of nicotine product, tobacco, vapor, anything there is. So over the past few discussions, we have talked a lot about negotiating different points of what does apply, what's not under it, and even some of it that's going to be in this aren't points that I, aren't the ones that I got in there, but as a whole, I believe that this ordinance that's here today represents something good that we're doing towards the community, and it's something that I'm going to support, although I still have a finer, a few minor adjustments. So every discussion that we had, at the heart of it was protecting youth. But parallel to that, there was always a different interest that was sort of hovering on the side, and that was the fact that many of our business owners in Sonoma have had businesses for decades, and when they started them, they had products that were legal at the time, and they've been selling them, and they've built their livelihood. So we recognize the fact that these businesses exist. So when it seems like there's this weird line that we're drawing between this is on it, this it isn't, we just, I wanted to have something on there to support these businesses and not just clean them out completely. So we decided to pick out products that we thought were exclusively adult products. That's why the cigar thing kept coming up and other things. And things that went on the kids' side, that's what got on the no side. So it might be true that a lot of adults also enjoy e-cigarettes, but the fact is, if you talk to any parents in our community, and if you talk to the teenagers themselves, they're everywhere, and everyone can say that they're not selling them to teenagers, but obviously, somebody is. So we've decided that this is a value in our community to, to at least, you know, take steps to take it out of kids' hands, because at the end of the day, whether you're addicted to, you know, an e-cigarette or you're addicted to nicotine, the fact is, you're still addicted to something, and it's not something that I think teenagers need to be dealing with at any point. So with the, with this particular thing, maybe at the end, we'll start talking about finer points. I thought the point about the walk-in humidor was a point that I would reconsider about not having self-service displays, and there might be some other points, but I'm interested to hearing what my coaching. Oh, and one other point was, this wouldn't be the first time that this city has decided to ban products that are legal in other cities. And, you know, it's, it's fine for each community to decide for themselves what they want, and I realize that the character of every city is different, so there could be things that are perfectly, you know, appropriate and appreciated by other communities, but the fact that we don't have it here doesn't, you know, it's no judgment onto another city. It's something that we've decided for ourselves that we just don't want to have, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Councilmember Edwards?
I'd be happy to go. I concur with the comments and the walk-in humidor, I'm happy to discuss later. Today on NPR, Target stores decided they were going to reduce processed foods that they're selling, and they, they put cornflakes on that list, which I found was, was interesting. But I've been, I've been vending products to companies like Whole Foods, Amy's Kitchens, and folks like that for years, so selling pure ingredients is what I've always done. Back in Planning Commission, we, several years ago, we had a medical marijuana ordinance coming to us and being, you know, open-minded about things. I, you know, suggested that it has to be certified organic, has to have certain things. I don't know anything about what, how you make this stuff, or what goes in it, but I don't see any of the major organic food producers and folks, or retailers, wholesalers, getting involved in this business. So it tells me, it makes me a little nervous about it. Talking to some of the kids that play baseball in town, and they go to the high school, I have very young kids, and always thinking about where they're going to go to school and what they're going to do, and I ask kids all the time, is what's the worst thing about the high school and what's the best thing about the high school? And the best thing is their ability to play sports and doing those sorts of things. And to, to a person, they all come back and say, "The worst thing is all the kids are hanging out vaping." Vaping comes into every single conversation, and I have, I have trouble with that. I don't think what we're doing is banning people in their own personal homes what they're going to do. That's, it doesn't bother me what people are going to do in their homes, but when I have, I, I worked out on Eighth Street, and we have people that just walk around the buildings for their exercise and they're vaping and they're blowing, whatever they blow into our business, into our buildings, comes through the windows. I don't really care for it or care to be around it, but what people do in their own personal space is fine with me. I don't believe that there's a tax issue with it or our revenue issue is going to change by not having it in town. And I'm going to support moving along with this, but I do agree, there's a few finer points that we need to take care of.
If I could just ask city staff to take a look, because we, we've had two council members say self-service display, and I was just reading that. It says, "Self-service display means the open display or storage of tobacco products or tobacco paraphernalia in a manner that is physically accessible in any way to the general public without the assistance of the retailer or employee of the retailer." So I guess my question is to Mrs. Pastroll. Could you comment on the, I've never been into the service that want to talk about, but this sounds like it's geared to an open display without the retailer being present.
It's geared for a display where a young person probably could come in and take it without the assistance of a clerk. Thanks. Without the assistance of a clerk or a salesperson. So that's the intent, to keep roughly a counter between the member of the public, ideally the, the minor, but also adults, from the products which are behind the counter.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted a clarification. Is there any other council member comments? Councilmember Agamonte?
Yeah, first, I'd like to welcome Mr. Homerun. Is he gone?
No.
Oh. I just, I wanted to welcome you here because I know that you, you're very generous to nonprofits here in Sonoma, and I thought you're, you're, you were very eloquent. Thank you so much for speaking. It's interesting, I think someone was, one of our speakers said 94 cities have looked at this type of an ordinance. Well, it's almost sad, because there's almost 500 cities in the state of California, so that means a lot of, we're really possibly looking at being one of the first to do something like this. I have to admit, I have, I don't understand smoking, I don't understand the business, but I have been in family, in a family where people have ended up with lung cancer and cancer and all the bad things that happen as a result of this. And it's interesting, after our first session, I didn't, I, I was so confused, because I thought we were getting very specific on the, with respect to developing this ordinance, that I actually called someone for advice, and I said, "I don't even remember what we're doing." The purpose of this ordinance, really, I mean, adults can do whatever they want, but the purpose of this is to let some of these products be less attractive to kids, and that's what we're thinking of, is, is limiting those products for young people, and so I'm pretty clear on that. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Gallion?
The word nicotine is, for me, key in this decision. In vaporing, you cannot tell me that there is no nicotine. In smoking, you can't tell me, in cigarettes, that there is no nicotine. And for the gentleman that is shaking his head in the back of the room, I will tell you that I have family members who have experienced both smoking and vaporing and have tried to come off both, and it is an ugly process in both respects. And that is my personal experience with it. However, as it was pointed out, this is for the benefit of the community. I think that number one, and foremost, I have committed myself in education from 1994 in a public charter school. I have seen the statistics grow within this community, and we have done a good job on trying to back it and, and make it less than what it was before. But our reports continue to come out at younger and younger ages of our students that are going ahead and trying cigarettes, that are now trying the vapors, that are not even in high school. I don't think you can dispute those particular facts. You can call it a home environment, but at some points, a parent who is in a, who is working, you know, two jobs and whatever, is not always there to oversee it. Why would we be making this easier for them to go ahead and participate? I have to be committed in education, because that is what I have chosen in life. And it isn't just the fact that this is a student here, it's also the education of a child, it's the education of an adult, it's the education of a community. This ordinance is only 50% of the solution. The other 50% is educating yourself, whether it's with your healthcare provider, whether it is with your best friend, whether it is with another individual. There will always be a side that will be supporting tobacco. There will always be a side that will be supporting vaporing and e-cigarettes. There will always be reasons and facts to take your point and go further. The buck stops here. We are here tonight to go ahead and introduce, in this council, against several veiled, shall I say, proclamations of what may happen to our community based on what decision we make here tonight. I'm here in support of the people who live in our community, and I have done my homework. I will be supporting this. Thank you. I do have one question, though. In talking today, I really feel the effective date of this particular ordinance, I would like to see if we could change that to January 1, 2016. It does make sense that there is supply here in the different stores, and I would like to go ahead and change the effective date to that point, and if that makes a difference. I would like an answer to that question.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Gallion. I'll go ahead and speak. I would, I would agree with that, January 2016, to have this introduced. I think it would give a little bit of time for the, for the county. I know they're looking at their, their TRL. I will be supporting this. I've heard the arguments back and forth, and they're valid. And I remember why this was started. This was started by the old council when I was the vice mayor, and it was brought up by the council at that point, that they wanted to try to stop kids from, from buying cigarettes. So this has been an approach that's gone on for about eight months, and when I became mayor in December, we were waiting for a new council to come on board, and we started dealing with this, and we're on, at our first reading. I 100% like what I see and will be supporting this. I do want to talk to my colleagues to make sure that they feel good about H, because if, if, if H is defined a way that you would like, or if there's language that would make you feel more comfortable.
You're referring to H, the flavored tobacco products?
Or no, the self-service display. Because there was some questions. Councilmember Edwards?
I think, is it Mr. Taylor or Mr. Norton? Excuse me. Taylor. So how is your, if, through the mayor's veritify?
Oh, yeah.
So how is your setup? I apologize, I haven't been in your store.
So you're reopening the, the public hearing to take the testimony of this, this particular person?
Yes. Is that okay? Yes. A council member has a question, so we're opening up public comment.
Yes.
Maybe you could tell me what the configuration is of how you, when you walk in your store?
Yeah, so it's, the walk-in humidor is inside the store, so you'd come in the store, and then there's a separate door off to the side, that's the walk-in humidor, and there's a sign on that door, it's actually off to the side, that says, "Nobody under 18 admitted." So it's separate, and there's another door, and then there's also a warning sign there.
Yeah, I'll bet it's completely visible from wherever you operate your business. I mean, in other words, where you check out people or where?
I hope it's completely visible, but I'd say the majority of people walk in and say, "Where's the humidor?"
No, no, I know, no, no, that's not what I mean. I mean, you're aware of, I know it's a small building.
Yes, it's a small building.
You can obviously see it when you're...
Not from the outside.
No, no, from the inside, where you are. In other words, if you're working there in your business...
Can I see it? No. In other words, if somebody walks into the humidor...
No, no, no. I'm just talking about, you can see who's walking in.
Yes.
There you go. Okay. That's what I was looking for.
Okay.
Thank you.
So if it was a situation where somebody couldn't get in unless you let them in, then that would comply with this?
Yes, it would not be physically accessible in any way to the general public without the assistance of Mr. Taylor.
Please step up to the microphone.
The problem for me being is, the way the store is configured, it's wine as well. So the humidor isn't off to the front and the side. I'm the cash register, the retail sale portion is back, so I could open the door for a person, let them in, but unless I stood there and handed them one product at a time, they would take things off the shelf.
I, I think where I'm going, we haven't spoken about this, but that, I mean, you're going to see that people... going to see that people, it's not like you have 50 people in your store at one time.
Five or six.
Yeah, so you have a pretty clear control of your customers. That's, that's where I'm thinking, where you make eye contact, probably generally with every customer who comes in. That's some sort of a control, from my perspective.
I might ask you a question if I could. If I were to walk into your store, approach the separate door for the humidor?
Mm-hmm.
I could open the door, walk in, grab as many cigars as I wanted, put in my inside coat, and walk out of the store, you'd never see me.
No, I have cameras in there.
Okay, but aside from the cameras, you could miss me, I could take all of, no.
I have cameras in the store as well.
And you're watching those a lot?
Well, they're monitors from where I am, so I can see when somebody walks into the store, and I can see when they walk into the humidor.
But to purchase those cigars, I need to take them to your register?
Cash register.
And you actually have to look at them and, and count them up, and identify the nature of them, and then charge me accordingly.
Right, each one has a price sticker on it.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. City Attorney?
Yeah, one thought I had here, the definition is two parts. It says that a self-service display is a open display or storage of, of product in a manner that is physically accessible in any way to the general public without the assistance of the retailer. The system that he has here, whether or not the assistance of the retailer is necessary is a little unclear. He certainly can monitor the people that go in and out. And, and a direct person-to-person transfer between the purchaser and the retailer. So both of those things have to be missing in order for there to be a self-service display. We know that you cannot purchase a cigar from this particular retailer without a direct person-to-person transaction occurring. And thus, I think that his operation would not be considered a self-service display.
Thank you. And City Attorney, we opened up public comment, now I'm going to go ahead and close.
Yes.
I'll bring it back to council, Councilmember Edwards.
So I have a comment about delaying the decision. So how many students do we have at Sonoma Valley High School in all classes?
I, I believe there are 1,600.
So what I see by delaying it is, so we're going to start a school year in September, we're going to expose the freshmen, the, the brand-new kids in school to these tobacco products. I mean, I'm sure they've seen them in junior high as well, but what I'm thinking is that by delaying it, we're going to expose a whole nother group of people. I think the, the benefit of current inventory doesn't outweigh the more people that are going to be exposed to product.
Councilmember Hundley?
I see your point, and I see your point. What if instead of 30 days, it was 90 days? From the day we pass it? I agree that they're going to have some inventory, and 30 days is, might be aggressive for people to try to unload it, but 90 days, I would feel, would be enough notice for, you know, people to not order new stuff, and then hopefully sell what's on hand, or 60.
And city staff, we're, we're assuming that if this goes through the process with, with votes, it would be around July, when our second, so July 1. So if we didn't, 90 days from July 1 would be October, and Vice Mayor Gallion was mentioning January 2001. I'm, I'm actually okay with both. It was brought to my attention today that I'm here to stop underage smoking, and there is that thought process, if there is inventory that needs to be used up by adults. I would like to give ample time for that. I think the city council, just going through this motion, is showing the public that, you know, we do not want our retailers selling to minors. So I think the 90 or the 2016, I would support either. Councilmember Agamonte?
Well, since I'm not in the retail business, I don't know how you unload these products. I would go for the shorter period, 90.
90?
Yeah.
Okay. Do I have a motion on the floor, or more comments?
I might make a couple of comments here. By law, ordinances become effective 30 days after their adoption. So in order to have this delayed until the 90-day period, we would have to insert in the language in the ordinance itself to the effect that it does not become effective until, I think we should specify a particular date, so that even though the law says it becomes effective, the ordinance itself will have a language, have language in that specifies when it becomes effective, if adopted.
Yeah, thank you.
And that would need some crafting tonight, so if we're going to do that tonight, we would need to do that now, in order for you to introduce it tonight. If you don't want us to do the wordsmithing tonight, then we would need to put this over again for another introduction and first reading.
Yeah, we're going to go ahead and take a five-minute recess.
I think we can do it in five minutes.
Does City Attorney have any comments for the council?
I would like to ask for clarification. The, we have inserted language which deals with the effective date of this ordinance, which will then allow additional time beyond the 30 days that normally an ordinance would, would take effect. But what is unclear to the people at this table staff is do, does the council want it 90 days from the first reading, 90 days from the second reading when it's adopted, or 90 days from the day it would normally go into effect, which is July 1?
Thank you, I will ask both colleagues, Councilmember Hundley?
Actually, we're looking for a, a date certain, whether it would be September 1st or October 1st.
So I was going to suggest October 1st, but I'm just making that up.
Vice Mayor Gallion?
I can agree to that.
Okay. Is there?
I also, I'm fine.
And I would be okay with October 1st. So is, one of my colleagues have a, a motion or more comment on this item? Vice Mayor?
I mean, I'm, I'm pretty adamant about the September 1st date coming. I mean, school starts in August. I would be, I would prefer to get it, I mean, it, it sounds like we're there, and we have five people that are there. You know, I'd be, I could live with 60 days versus the 90 days, and just have it buttoned up before school starts.
So, Mrs. Pistole, how does that affect the language?
We would be adding an additional provision which clarified the effective date, primarily for enforcement and the applicability of a license. It would affect, the licensing in the first year would be prorated, the fee, and the application would just be for a shorter period of time. After that, it would be an annual license. And the other effect is, by law, ordinances are effective 30 days after they are passed. However, we will be adding specific language which overrides that.
So if it's out of the, I'm sorry, if it's out of the norm, would that bring an appeal? Or?
Our office has, has done this upon request in the past, and...
There shouldn't be an issue with this. Delaying the effective date of an ordinance beyond the 30-day period is fairly common.
Is outside the realm of the decision itself, is what you're offering.
Councilmember Edwards?
I'm not sure what you're asking. What we're proposing is, we would like a date certain, that the council is agreeing that this ordinance will not become effective, so that enforcement of its provisions would not occur until after that specific date. And so what date that is, we've heard some articulate October 1, another council member has articulated September, September 1. Obviously, it takes a majority, and we're off and running. And the language will be in the ordinance that specifies that date.
I mean, I'd be happy to go with the 30 days after the reading, because I think what the, we're only talking about 10 retailers, actually nine, because one doesn't sell some of the things we're talking about, that I'll bet they'll start moving their inventory immediately.
Another way to, to address this is, the staff could bring it back for a second reading 30 days before you tell us you want it to become effective, we wouldn't have to add this language to the ordinance. So we come back for a second reading in August, so it would become effective in September, and that would work just as well, and that would be a much simpler approach. So you just tell us the date that you want this thing to become effective, and we'll bring it back to you approximately 30 days before that date for a second reading.
Councilmember Edwards, are you? Vice Mayor Gallion?
Well, the question that I have is this, is that until the ordinance is passed, which is the second reading, you know, we don't know that we have an ordinance. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And so to me, I am a lot more comfortable bringing that back and passing the ordinance, and then allowing for a date to be determined in that second reading.
And that date then needs to be determined in the first reading, i.e. tonight.
Right. Now, given the fact that there could be a delay for whatever significant reason, you know, Mother Nature included, there could be a possibility where we might be closing that window, which I'm trying to give for businesses to unload their inventory. And so to me, I want to make it more than 30 days, and I'm fine with going to 90 days, I'm fine with going to 60 days. But I do not want it to be less than 30 days. And, and that to me is really important, because I want to be able to give the businesses the, the ability to go ahead and shift, you know, some are multiple stores, you know, things like that, where they could go ahead and do that. And I don't want them ordering, you know, for the, for the most part, or orders that have just come in.
So 60 days would be September 1, based on a, on a July, around July, and I would support that.
And then, can I also ask a further question? And that would be, as far as the licensing is concerned, then when would the city be sending out the licensing, and how would all that work? Like, what's the timing for that?
Well, basically, what we would, would do is, we would start preparing the notice now, since we know what, well, when we know what the date certain is, so we would be preparing the, the notices and the letters, and starting to send those out. They still wouldn't be due until the effective, effective date, but we would be sending those out likely 30 days ahead of time, probably actually 45 days before the effective date, so it gets time for the businesses to process and return them back to us.
Okay, so at that point?
But we would be prorating them for the last period of the year, the dollar amount.
All right, thank you very much. That was my other concern.
Thank you. Councilmember Hundley?
Just a couple finer points. The two things that we talked about at the end last time, one was the, we were trying to figure out what to do with chewing tobacco, and we decided five or more. But I think, I don't know if you guys got the letter I did, explaining the economics of chewing tobacco, and how it's actually costs a lot more than cigars, and then also someone tonight had mentioned the, the minimum amount for cigars, and I know in some places it's three, and we picked five. So I wanted to see if everyone still felt the same way about those. And then if the county ends up passing theirs, and they have different packaging restrictions, do we know how that, that would fit with ours, whether we have to change ours, or we can have them side by side, or?
City Mayor?
Well, then, well, then you would be modifying our ordinance, so then we would have to come back and...
So we would have to conform to the county?
No, we don't have to, no, we would not have to, that would be your choice, whether you would want to mod-
I don't know if like superseded or something.
We can have, we can have a different ordinance in the county, we do not have to align with the county, that would just be something that, if the council would want to consider that, not something that...
Oh, it's not mandated?
No, it is not.
And I guess one of the council quest, or city staff, just for clarification, if we made any modifications to this first reading, it would have to come back as a first reading, which would delay the timeline down the... Is there any more discussion or possible action? Vice Mayor Gallion?
I would like to make a motion to introduce an ordinance of the City of Sonoma requiring the licensure of tobacco retailers and amending Chapter 7.25 of the municipal code with the date as stipulated September 1, 2015.
And I'll, I'll second that motion?
As the maker of the motion, the seconder, the way we are crafting this is by including language saying that the ordinance will not be enforced until September 1, 2015. Thus, it becomes effective, but it won't be enforced until September 1, 2015.
Okay, so the effective date of this ordinance will be September 1, 2015.
It won't be enforced until then, but it will become effective before then, but it won't be enforced until that time.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Is that acceptable?
Yes.
City Clerk, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Could I get a roll call vote of my colleagues on the council?
Councilmember Gallion?
Aye.
Councilmember Hundley?
Aye.
Councilmember Agamonte?
Aye.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Mayor Cook?
Aye. For public, we have accepted the first reading of the TRL with a provision that shows that we won't be enforcing until September 1. With that, we will go ahead and move on to our next item, which is discussion, consideration, and possible action to approve a new street name signage replacement program. City Engineer?
This issue before you tonight responds to the council goal to consider a unique Sonoma historic design for street name signage, and it also tags on to a federal mandate to, to improve the retroreflativity of signage. So I just want to be clear that we're, we would have to replace the signage anyway over time, but this is a great opportunity to look for other designs. As you may recall, staff engaged local sign designer, Bob Sanders, to design some street name signs, which are in your agenda packet, and we brought this issue to the council on March 16. And at that time, there was a general, but not unanimous preference for Design 1B, which is the one with the bear and the stars, which also matches the Wayfinder signage, which is in front of the plaza. And council referred this to the Design Review and Historic Preservation Commission, and that commission met on April 21. And it also unanimously recommended Design 1B, which again is the golden bear and stars. So tonight, we'd like to see the council consider, oh, well, we'd also, the Design Review and Historic Preservation Commission also recommended that the council consider a dual-name sign. Now, this wasn't on your charge to the commission, but they're recommending a dual-name street signage scheme only at the five intersections surrounding the plaza, and this is to place the historic street name signs in lieu of the bear and stars on the Design 1B. Maybe you have it on your monitors, but I tried to craft what it might look like. And what you see in front of you is the Design 1B with the bear and stars. Obviously, there is no West Denmark Street, so it's just a mock-up. And here's what I tried to roughly craft, which would be West Napa Street with the historic sign name in lieu of the bear and stars. So the issue before you is, so whether to approve the street name sign design, and then consider whether to add the dual-name sign design for the five intersections surrounding the plaza.
Thank you. Is there any council questions? Councilmember Hundley?
So I assume that Bob Sanders is going to do the, would do the design of adding the historic name to the sign?
Yes, I think we would definitely engage him again and make sure that we'd get it correct.
Would anybody see a mock-up before it gets printed? Like, would it go back to the DRHC, or would it just be like a staff approval issue?
Staff would recommend that it probably just be a staff approval. We can consult with maybe Mr. Demmler, who is initiating this after we get a design. I think it would be overkill to take it back to the Design Review Historic Preservation Commission.
Councilmember Edwards?
Dan, I actually met with Rob-
Dan, I actually met with Robert Demler on this subject, and the, so this is only going to be on, on how many streets that we're going to have the dual names?
The five intersections surrounding the plaza.
Okay. So is there an opportunity to take this where the signs maybe become a little larger? Where we can accomplish all and have, so we don't, we had, the commission and the council, the majority went with the bear, which matches the sign downtown. Could the Calle Estados Unidos go underneath and just have a deeper sign and where it's a little more elegant?
Yes, it's definitely feasible. It would take a little bit more bracketing and a little bit more signage cost, but for only five intersections, it's doable.
Okay, thank you.
I just have a question.
Councilmember Aggermonte? We're having a fashion problem.
It's probably frozen. Let me see. With respect to the sign, and possibly someone might have this answer, it was brought to my attention that the street doesn't necessarily relate to the Spanish words. It was just what they were called whenever. So is the word circa, is that sort of an international term that everybody understands? So people won't say, well, I don't understand why it says one thing in English and another thing in Spanish?
I think you might mean calle.
Calle, yeah, well, well, no, I'm talking circa, because, I mean, I don't know if these names relate to each other, but Calle Estados Unidos indefinitely is not West Napa Street. So what I'm saying is, is there a way to say Calle Estados Unidos, if that's the way it related, was when? When did they use that? When was that street name used? So people won't think, well, I don't understand.
That is certainly an option, especially if we take Councilmember Edwards's suggestion of a larger sign. It could, we could keep the bear and stars at the top and maybe have a longer tagline underneath the street name that may have room for the circa-whatever year.
Yeah, circa, yeah. I mean, I don't know, is that an international term, or just something we use here in the United States?
Oh.
Or is it just something we use here in the United States? I don't know.
I'm sorry, I don't know that.
Vice Mayor Gallion.
I have a question later, but I am, I am concerned, and I want to hear all the information. If we go ahead and establish this as a historical, you know, reverence, I like Councilmember Edwards's idea, but I would like to see the word historic, you know, meaning that prefaced before the actual name of the street. So in other words, historic Calle Vallejo. Because I think what's important is, in Google Maps, in locations, when people are trying to figure out where they are, in all of these destinations, I want them to be using the actual street names today, because we would have no reference. I can see someone Googling that, that name and wanting to find out where it is in Sonoma and finding no destination. And I know that sounds kind of picky, but there are people that do that, and especially when they're traveling, and if the address is on West Napa Street and they see Calle Vallejo, they're going to be confused as to where they're going.
Councilmember Aggermonte.
Thank you. And I, possibly Mr. Demler can answer this, because I think this may have been an example used in New Orleans, and I'm not sure, so I don't know how they might handle this issue.
We'll do that during public comment. Councilmember Hunley?
And I have a related question. What language, when you're, what language in New Orleans did they put on their signs?
It must be French. They use rue as most of the street names.
Okay. Very impressive staff. Councilmember-
I lived there for four years.
Okay, that's good.
So just to add that, there's, I've traveled all around the world, and there's many countries that have the names, historic names and so on, and Gaelic and other things in different countries. So it's, I think it's something where I don't see where the possibility of much confusion.
Well, I don't-
The idea is, the bold part is going to be West Napa, and then it's going to be whatever that, I don't remember what the street was for West Napa. It was-
But are those communities, are those communities next to other communities that have the primary language of Gaelic?
No, well, of course, yeah. But the thing is, is that we're, I think what we're looking at is something that calls attention to our historic nature, which is part of our next item, which is our council goals. I'll leave it at that.
And I would just, I guess the only question I have is really more of a comment, but I would think that would be italic, probably, and which would kind of show that, so maybe Demler can talk about that when he comes up. Is there any other council questions before we go to public comment? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and open up for public comment, and they're calling for you.
Robert Demler, First Street West, Sonoma. Thank you very much, and my apologies for my barrage of packets to you, but I thought they were important, especially the one today, because I made reference to it in my original letter, and it, and I included in my original packet an email that I'd received from Dr. Meyerhoff, who is our Sonoma League historian. And I gave you the photocopies of the pages from the book where Peter Meyerhoff obtained those names, and I sent in the packet the names with some possible dates of the usage of those names. So to try to answer all of your concerns, and I will start with Councilperson Aggermonte, we, I don't think it's useful to put circa, especially in Sonoma, because everything about Sonoma history is very unclear. The, we, our objective was to go back to the earliest known name. Some of the streets have changed several times. Some of the streets also have moved. That original big map from about 1890 that I presented you, for example, West, First Street West was originally Calle Huerta, then it became Calle Salvador or Salvador Street, and then it became First Street West. First Street East was originally Calle Quartel, if I'm pronouncing it correctly, which means barracks or meeting place. And then it became East Street or Calle Oriente, depending on who was the speaker, and then it became First Street East. So we're proposing the earliest known street name. And in the fact, it was confusing, because I used United States Street, and that was changed sometime between the influence of the Americans in Sonoma and the 1890s map. And it wasn't really the original name. The original name was like it is today. It was the Road to Napa. So instead of putting all of that in a name, we just said Calle Napa, which is the same today as Napa Street. And Broadway was Le Calle, and so Peter thought that everybody in town might have referred to it as the Big Street, or the Wide Street, or whatever, so we just said Le Calle Grande for that. And it's only those five intersections. Now, as, as far as putting the word historic in front, if you all decide that, I have no objection, because I'm eternally grateful for you even considering this proposal. However, I do think it's making it crowded and busy and whatever. Using the mayor's suggestion of italics, it's a smaller font as well, and the Spanish name. And I think there would be a difference, because the regular street name will be in large font, and this will be smaller. It's not intended for drivers, it's intended for walkers, for pedestrians. And so I do, over the last couple of weeks, I've grown to love that golden bear up there. So my proposal tonight for you is that you leave the golden bear at the top and don't crowd that Spanish name in that arch. Put it below, have a deeper, higher sign, but the same shape, the same color as everything, and it would look nice, I think, if you do it smaller font, italic, and below. So that's, that's my proposal. I gave you the, the book pages showing the original names, and I just think it would be fantastic to emphasize our greatest treasure in Sonoma, which is not wine, or vapors, or whatever they are, but it's, it's our historic plaza, our beloved plaza. Also, I want to say, this last week, I was up in Santa Rosa, and I know tonight's, the theme of tonight's meeting was, has been Santa Rosa. I'm going to start going to their meetings, too. I have heard from the sign maker that we might consider a separate sign. And I was in a couple of the historic neighborhoods in Santa Rosa, and they do have separate signs, and it says Historic McDonald District. It says Historic Ridgeway District, and it looks very busy to me. And it is, in my estimation, more confusing to have two signs than one with large font and small font. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you. When we come back to that, we might-
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Mayor?
Thank you. Mayor Cook, councilmembers. Joe Costello, 128 Mission Terrace. I came over tonight to agree with Mr. Demler's comments regarding the dual signage. I think, I think it's a good idea, but I do think it's really important that we are historically accurate when we do that. Mr. Demler mentioned earlier that the, what is it, the 180th anniversary of the founding of the city was in 1835. So it would seem to me that we would want to go back to the founding of the city to be historically accurate as to how the city streets were named at that time. And I raised that question, because in reading and looking over the, the information in the packet, Calle Estados Unidos, it seems to me very unlikely that the founders of the city in 1835 would have named a street about the United States. So that's, that's my comments. I think it's, it's going to be a very good thing for the city, and I fully support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and bring it back to council for discussion and possible action. Councilmember Hunley?
I like the idea of keeping the little bear on the plaza, but what happens outside of that, I didn't think about the, the fact that it's a Spanish word and that some people might get confused that it's a translation until it was brought up earlier today, but the more I thought about it, the plaza now already isn't a place that, I don't think it, it feels like a very inclusive place as it is. And I feel like adding something that could add confusion if someone came to the plaza and only spoke Spanish, and they recognized, you know, one phrase on the sign, but that's not even the name of the road. I just think it could be really confusing for people. So I like the idea of putting historic in front of it to identify it, because otherwise people are going to be like, well, what's this other random word on here? So I would like to add historic, just to make it very clear what the name is. I guess we should decide or have certified when we are comfortable or sure that the names that we want on the signs, that we have done the proper research to do that. And I do think that this should come back, I don't think it needs to come back to us, but I think that it should come to the Design Review and Historic Preservation Commission, because even though they are charged with doing businesses and not necessarily city projects, I think that they're working to do, to create like a cohesive feel for the plaza, and so having their input, I think, would be important.
Vice Mayor Gallion.
I just wanted to say, in one of the rare times that I have used my electronic device, I did go into Google Maps, and when I put in Calle Napa, it came up East Napa Street, West Napa Street, and Napa Road. So it is identified in there with that verbiage. So I'm satisfied in that respect.
Councilmember Edwards.
I'll agree with you again, Laurie. The, maybe we can teach Google a thing or two, but to, to go with what you're speaking about, instead of the word historic, but maybe just C period and what we think the date is. So in other words, if it was, you'd pick a date, and it would, it would be C 18x, and then tie it in with the name. I don't think anybody's going to get confused with it being in Spanish, or, because they're going to get it.
Councilmember Aggermonte.
I like that suggestion. Just C period.
And I will say that I do like that, the idea, and I do support the dual. I would leave it up to the experts to see what that would look like. And I guess we're kind of looking for a motion of the council and direction.
Councilmember Hunley?
I move to approve the new street name signage replacement program with the addition of the historic names. Are we all agreeing to add the date?
To give direction to staff, we probably, probably in the motion should put the C dot, if that's what you agree with.
And it should probably be the year that's on the big sign, right? To keep our date straight. Don't we have a date on the sign out in front of City Hall?
I would say it'd be on the Pebló, the Pebló days.
Maybe we can have Mr. Demler interject a few things before we take a final.
Yeah. Do you want to come back up? I'll open up public.
Thank you very much. The, the names that I gave you in today's packet are the correct ones, okay? There was confusion, because they changed several times, and the first packet I gave you was an intra-name plus the name that was at around 1890. So the ones I gave you today are correct. So that's fine. Secondly, if you have to put a date, it says in the book that these, these names were done when the, the streets were laid out by the general and by Mr. Richardson. So this was at the beginning of the period, of the Pueblo period, and there is no date there. If you have to have a date, then you must use the circa, a C period, and I would recommend that you use 1835 to reinforce the actual date of the founding of the Pueblo itself. Surely, with, you know, the general was a very creative man and a, and very multidisciplined, and he had this in mind, and we have the largest plaza in California, and he did it to be able to march his troops and exercise. So I know he had some of these names in mind when he did it, but there is no date with this, but these are the first names, so you can feel comfortable with that. As far as putting historic in front of it, if it's in italics and it's in Spanish, I think everybody can see the difference, and I think our Hispanic community would be ecstatic. And, and everybody, everybody knows that that's First Street West and Second, First Street East, and Napa, and, and Spain, and Broadway now, but I, I just, I think to keep it uncluttered, if you put a date, then I would recommend you put a date just below the Spanish names, so it doesn't look all confused, and make the sign high enough, deep enough, whatever, that it reflects that. And I think it would look really nice. And as I say, I've grown to love the golden bear on top. That's a, that was a nice touch.
Thank you, Mr. Demler.
Any questions? I'm happy to answer.
So we have a motion on the floor with Hunley, if you want to redo it.
I would like to make a motion to approve the new street name signage replacement program by adding the historic names to our street signs on the plaza, as well as the date that our city was founded, with final approval to be made by the Design Review and Historic Preservation Commission.
Is there a-
I'll second that.
Is there any other discussion before the vote? City Clerk, we have a motion and a second.
Councilmember Gallion.
Aye.
Councilmember Hunley.
Aye.
Councilmember Aggermonte.
Aye.
Councilmember Edwards.
Yes.
Mayor Cook.
Aye. Yes, and for public to clarify the action to approve a new street name signage replacement program using the circa of 1835, and West Spain Street being Calle Vallejo, East Spain Street being, well, we'll go off this. My Spanish isn't that good. My Spanish isn't that good. With that, we'll go ahead and go to 7B, Discussion, Consideration, and Possible Action to Approve the 2015-2016 City Council Goals. City Major?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Cook, and members of the City Council. I'm really pleased to bring this item to you tonight. This is the City Manager's Report, and is based on your March 25 City Council, what I called your Roll-Up-Your-Sleeves Goal Setting Work Study Session. And during that study session, each of council members discussed what you envisioned for the upcoming year 2015-16, and in addition to submitting your top five goals and individually reviewing those goals, you also looked at the goals submitted by members of the public. As you individually reviewed your council goals, you then deliberated on which goals were your highest priorities and would be carried forward as staff's strategic plan for the city. And once your final goals were determined and categorized into the major focus areas, you directed me as your City Manager to prepare the report and incorporating those goals. So tonight, I'm excited and pleased to present to you the report of your council goals for 2015-16. And so I will walk you through each of your council goals, and then I will accept your comments and direction and any changes that you might direct me to do before, hopefully that you adopt these goals, and these goals will become then the roadmap for staff moving forward with our work priorities and the draft budget. So essentially, kind of the, setting the tenor of your council goals, kind of the major goal is to provide sound municipal leadership in a manner that exemplifies Sonoma's unique historic character while ensuring long-term viability and sustainability. And this was really the theme throughout what you talked about on March 25, as you looked at all of your council goals. Your major focus areas that you looked at were, you changed them a little bit from prior years. Your focus areas were and are city character, fiscal management, housing, infrastructure, policy and leadership, public service and community resources, and water. So your first major focus area is city character. And kind of capitalizing on city character, your theme was to preserve, promote, and celebrate the unique characteristics of Sonoma, encourage the incorporation of our history into the city, community, and business identities, focus on fostering a tourism economy while maintaining and strengthening historic values, create a sense of place for our residents in a safe, healthy, and vibrant community, and maintain Sonoma as our hometown. And your key elements that you look at to, for that character is, number one, to work to realign cities to Sonoma's tourism-based economy with the true meaning of Sonoma's rich history. So why do people come here? We need to reemphasize our historic characteristics. The second is to make a commitment to the community for special focus or dedication. So consider the year adopting, a year of the children, a year of the neighborhoods, looking at those kinds of perhaps themes that we can build around. Next is to think about incorporate and promote the historic character in the City of Sonoma materials, the things that we do, and again, keep that historic character. And then lastly, establish a survey mechanism to establish current needs and priorities for the tourism industry, the business community, and city residents. Your next goal looked at fiscal management. And fiscal management, what you looked at there was to maintain high-level fiscal accountability that ensures short and long-term sustainability of the city's financial position, to provide for effective and efficient management of local taxpayers' dollars, to apply prudent internal policies and practices to assure the most cost-effective methods are utilized, and to be wise with our resources. So always be focused, when we're looking at fiscal management, on whose assets those are, who are we working for, and that is our citizens. So the key elements that surround that fiscal management is to adopt a balanced city budget and capital improvement plan with conservative assumptions that maintains a minimum general fund reserve target of at least 25%. To identify long-term strategy to address the cemetery fund deficit, and one of those ideas that came forward to help address that would be to review options for potentially the addition of a pet cemetery, and so that is one of the things that staff will be looking at. The next key element was to continue to seek opportunities for new revenue sources and grant revenues, and look at the, review the potential sale of any unused real estate the city may have. The next key element is very important, and that is to prepare an outline of steps for the 2016 ballot measure to extend the Measure J sales tax, and that would be for the municipal election in November of 2016. And the next key element under fiscal management is to continue review of public project bids to ensure that the city receives the best quality bid based on pricing structure. Your next goal focused on housing, and the definition, how you defined this goal was to analyze policy and programmatic tools suggested by the 2015 Housing Element Update, to implement strategies to facilitate creation of affordable rentals and workforce housing, to sustain or increase opportunities to continue the programs that we currently have in place to maintain current affordable housing stock. And under that category of goals, the key elements that you discussed were to support the update to the Mobile Home Rent Control Ordinance, to support the Sonoma County Housing Authority as our housing successor agency for Sonoma, and look to support the affordable housing projects that slated for Broadway, to continue to support the affordable workforce and senior housing inventory, and to continue, under that, to continue to enforce the illegal vacation rental provisions. And another key element was to encourage alternative rental housing in the form of cottage housing and junior second units. Oh, Dan, those went off again, the overheads?
Huh? I had turned the switch off back here. I didn't realize you were going to use it.
Okay. So your next key, your next goal category was infrastructure. An infrastructure goal is defined as to provide reliable, safe, and effective infrastructure throughout the city, to maintain the high level of service and reliability of city facilities, to monitor, mitigate, and reduce the community impacts related to development, infrastructure repair, and community events, or other outside agencies. The key elements under infrastructure, as you discussed, was to maintain the streets' capital repair program, including sidewalk repairs, and focus on sustaining the PCI rating of 70, which is good, 70 or above. And I can tell you that we are one of the highest-rated cities in Sonoma County, and that was validated in my discussions with the county administrator last week. So we are definitely one of the, we are the highest-rated city in Sonoma County. So, and under that key element was to continue to work with property owners on responsibilities for repairs to their properties and sidewalks, and review the cost-share formula for those sidewalk repairs. Under transport, the category of transportation, to review options for increasing public transit within Sonoma, excuse me. And under that key element category, look for opportunities for potentially a downtown city shuttle, and the potential for privatizing some service. Review parking options and striping for taxi cabs, motorcycles, bicycles. Continue promotion of bicycle and pedestrian-friendly transportation. Another key element is continue outreach to business owners to avoid employee parking around the plaza. Review options for city standards for crosswalk striping, and designate continental striping as the preferred alternative. And set policy to assure special and community events will not impact Sonoma in negative The next goal category is under policy and leadership, and that's defined as to provide continuing leadership as elected officials of the community, to promote the highest standard of ethics and accountability, take steps to assure a safe and vibrant community, to respond to county, state, federal legislative issues with a focus on retaining local control, to maintain strong relationships with our institutional partners, including the Chamber of the Visitors Bureau and the TID, to maintain economic vitality, and to promote actions to protect agricultural and natural resources from climate change impacts. And under that goal, your key elements was to continue project progress on elements of the Climate 2020 Plan targets, and in that key element was to define local, healthy community strategies that reduce GHG emissions, to promote the installation of renewable power and new development under solar, thermo, and potentially cogeneration, to promote a green economy by expanding relationships with businesses. Another key element was to revisit the city's customer service core value and policies, look at conflict resolution options for public issues and concerns, to administer customer satisfaction surveys, to update informational resources, and to continue efforts on our streamlining of internal processes. Another key element was to maintain our strong relationships with the County Board of Supervisors and state legislators, to support local business liaison services, and to bridge gaps between Sonoma businesses and the city. And to review, under that key element, was to review administrative processes to make more transparent, efficient, and easier to understand. Our next goal is under the category of public service and community resources, and that's defined as to provide continued leadership as public officials and residents of the community, to display the values exemplified through the extensive community-wide volunteerism by participation and actions, to promote synergy of local and regional nonprofits, community youth groups, school district, and Sonoma Valley organizations, and to recognize that local agencies and nonprofits fill vital roles with services that the city does not And under this goal category, your key elements that you discussed was creating a Sonoma Community Fund equal to, and this is where I weighed in as your City Manager, creating a fund equal to 1.5% of total general fund, and I define that as tax revenue sources to provide as a funding opportunity for nonprofit organizations, including the formerly designated Tier Ones, and small grants to community service organizations. And basically, what that would be, moving forward, is during this next year, we would actually, as I see this, and based on your discussions, we would create this community fund during the 15-16 year to really define what that would look like. The 15-16 year would look, still look at the Tier Ones as they're currently structured because of the short turnaround timeframe, but then during the 15-16 year, we would actually create the structure of the Sonoma Community Fund, if you continue with this goal as written. So the next key element would be to work with the county to address the lack of overall county resources available, and look at potential long-range opportunity to share resources with the city. And again, this may be a multi-year goal, but again, it's part of what the council is doing, is not, well, these are, these are goals for 15-16, a lot of them stretch farther out in future years. The next key element is to review options to provide diverse and affordable recreation programs, to collaborate with other agencies and groups to achieve this objective. I think what the council was looking at, many of their discussion, is, you know, we are, we are not just a standalone, that we need all of the community, and that we need partners out in the community to accomplish some of these goals, and to create an inventory of current recreation services, to support the establishment of a consortium of groups dedicated to housing support, feeding, and counseling for the homeless segment of our population, and potentially looking at outreach to faith-based organizations and County Community Development Commission to help us with this particular key element, to explore the outreach to groups dedicated to services for children and families, to assess the needs of this segment of the population, and one area we could consider working with the Health Action Committee to inventory current resources. And the last key element was to continue to provide and assess services to our residents for our aging community, and again, another area where we could develop partnerships out with our nonprofits in the community. And lastly, is the area of water, and defined as evaluate, develop, and implement short-term and long-term strategies to address the environmental and financial impacts of drought conditions, strengthen capital infrastructure with a focus on enhancing the city's local water supply, promote and support the value of water conservation to protect local resources. This is certainly a very important goal, and one that's first and foremost for all of us. And the key elements underwater is to enhance Sonoma's water reduction goals by providing the public with the tools they need to increase conservation. And some of the thoughts and ideas under there were related to public forums, press releases, and continued collaboration with the Valley of the Moon Water District on best practices, to explore opportunities to expand recycled water programs and project, to continue to review our per capita water consumption, to engage hotels and commercial businesses in water conservation strategy, and consider grants for conservation projects for residents and businesses, to review options to increase capacity through new sources and areas of storage, and to consider drafting a strategic planning document outlining policies and strategies for achieving improvements in water security and sustainability, and perhaps begin looking at a long-term plan of 10 years for future direction. And so through this all, lastly, is the council's goals policy statement, and I think it's really important to have this as a policy statement in part of the discussions, your discussions was that, were that the council goals are listed alphabetically and not in priority order, as we believe they are equal in priority and value to the community. And I think that that's, I think that that is really important because... And I think that that's, I think that that is really important because, you know, as we've discussed many times, you know, water is, water is last on the list, but it's certainly not lowest in priority. And I think that's really, you know, we've talked about that many times when we're talking council goals, and just because it ends up last, it may be perceived as it's a lowest priority, but it certainly isn't. So I think that that's really important, that that statement be listed at the bottom of your council goals. So that basically encapsulates your goal setting and the conversations that you had. I hope that did capture all of your thoughts and ideas and what you anticipated bringing forward. It's ambitious set of goals, but I think it's very exciting. Like I say, it's not necessarily that it's all expected to be captured because a lot of this is just going to be with a lot of these, the kickoff year in 15, 16 for some of these thoughts and ideas. But I, I think that it's something that is very valuable to Sonoma. I think in a lot of ways, it really sets the standards for some of the rest of the communities in Sonoma County, and I'm really proud to bring this forward to you.
Thank you, City Manager. Vice Mayor Gallion?
Well done, City Manager. That was not easy to take an afternoon of over three hours with many different points of discussion and put that in such a cogent document. I just want to say thank you, and I am in full support of this particular session as it's outlined here in this document.
Is there any other council questions before we go to public? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and open public. Seeing none, I will come back to council for discussion and possible action. Councilmember Hunley?
I would also like to commend our city manager for doing a great job of synthesizing everything that we said into these goals. And this was my first goal-setting session, and it was very inspiring to talk to everybody about their values and the things that they want to accomplish. And so it made me really excited about the next year to see, to see how it's all going to come out. So I think that this reflects the values of the community really well, and it sets us up for making a lot of positive progress. So thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Agamonte?
I'm, thank you so much. I know we discussed some of this today, and it's just, I think it's fantastic. I've been through a lot of strategic planning processes, but you know, this one really was very exciting to me. And I'd like to thank the Sonoma League for historic preservation. Look at city character, strengthening historic values. So that's right up there, so I really appreciate that. I also wanted to mention, I guess in housing, continue to support affordable workforce and senior housing. The city manager and I discussed that today, the summit that you attended. It sounds as if we're moving in the, in a good direction with respect to affordable housing. Infrastructure, I was looking at the opportunities for the, for a downtown city shuttle service, and I'm looking forward to and hope that Vice Mayor Gallion and I can work together on something like that, and possibly someday, Mr. Wagner. People will be running around the plaza saying, hurry up, I have to go jump on a Wagner, or something, because I know that was something that you talked about. So I think that's really, I'm pretty excited about that. And also, public service and community resources, our city manager. We discussed this today, and this issue of recreation is something that's very, very important to me. So I, I actually said that I would love to be able to look into other cities, how they have discussed the issue and brought it, put it on the table with respect to a recreation department. I see that possibly our Park and Rec District may be something, I'll be buried and gone, but possibly something that we can actually put together here within the next, in the next five or 10 years would be great. And I volunteered to actually look into that, how other small cities have done this, because you were really generous in your explanation. It's more than, you know, a concept. It involves space and buildings and a lot of other things. So I appreciate that. So I'm just really happy about that. I spoke to, to our, to Dan, and I'm so proud. I'm Tier One on water. That's a great thing. I'm married to a retired gardener, landscaper, and we battle about water all the time. So I'm really pleased, and this was a wonderful experience for me. I really appreciate going through it. Thank you, and thank my colleagues as well.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes, Carol, it looks great when it's on paper like that, and after having those few hours in the meeting. I, I look forward to the, the public-private partnerships and, and what clubs are doing and people are doing. And I met with Jack, and we, I met with a doctor who's doing some projects. We came up with a pretty interesting idea about moving this public transportation forward, and I know Jack's going to bird dog that for us. And, because he'll probably be sitting up here one day. And I, I think it's great. It gives us a tool to go back to and a reminder to, we all get busy with our regular lives after council meetings, and I think this is great to have up on the board, and I would love for the public to see it, and maybe Jason can help us with that and go from there. Thank you.
Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Gallion?
Well, I'd like to make a motion to go ahead and approve the 2015-16 council goals.
I'll second that.
Okay. And before we call for a vote, I will just say thank you to the city manager. This is my third year on the council, and I've appreciated this process for the third time, and it really helps. And just for public to understand, what I mean by that is when we do have agenda items, it always does say how it does go into our goals or against our goals, so that's always nice. So if we don't have any other comments, I'll go ahead and call for a roll call vote from the city clerk.
Councilmember Gallion?
Aye.
Councilmember Hunley?
Aye.
Councilmember Agamonte?
Aye.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Mayor Cook?
Aye. That leaves us to councilmember reports and comments. Councilmember Agamonte?
Yes, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I think, oh, April 15th, actually, there was a meeting. This is something I just wanted to share with the council, and I'll pass this down. The Sonoma Chamber Table Talk, I think it's a great, great venue, I mean, event for people to understand from a business sense the different things, and their topic was parking. So I thought that was kind of interesting. I didn't attend that meeting, but I certainly am going to make it a choice that I make in the future. I sit on the Health Roundtable, and I gave my report on adolescent alcohol binging, binge drinking here in the valley. And basically, we found that there's a huge gap in assist in helping kids with respect to that issue. So that's, we've come to some conclusions, and we're going to be moving forward on how we'll try to reduce this issue by 5% within the valley. And I'd like to just express that the county is helping me an awful lot with that because they have some wonderful services. Also, North Bay Watershed Association, we had a speaker, it's one of the most interesting groups I've been to, especially they have great speakers, and I'm just going to pass this also to the council. Their discussion with AB 1362 was actually the issue of stormwater, the monies that go to that, which is nothing, of course, and so we're working on that. And I just wanted to show the council this, this sheet here, this graph that shows the annual cost based on $500,000 a family in Walnut Creek, what we spend on stormwater versus a cellphone. So these are the things that I thought were really interesting. And the difference, of course, on stormwater, I think per this family, it's $81, purchasing cellphones or PG&E or water sewer. You can see the difference in the monies that go to stormwater, and I think it's something that we have to pay more attention to. And again, I mentioned with our city manager went to the Health Action North Bay Leadership Council with the housing summit, and I really would look forward to possibly attending those in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any, any other councilmember comments or reports? Vice Mayor Gallion?
I just wanted to say thank you very much, Mayor, for the dedication and for the council support to dedicate this meeting to my mother. And this was a relatively short illness, and yet, a life of 92 years is a life well-lived. And she enjoyed Sonoma, not just because her daughter was here, she enjoyed Sonoma because it was one of her favorite places even when she lived in San Francisco. So I just want to say in a continuing effort, it's nice to have her recognized in the legacy of our city as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Go ahead and go to city manager comments and announcements.
Thank you, America. As, as was mentioned, I did attend the North Bay Housing Summit, and it was sponsored by the, the North Bay Leadership Council. It was very interesting. I really enjoyed it, got a lot out of it. The primary discussion points did center around the strategy for creating more workforce and affordable housing. It was extremely interesting, and it really talked about new housing types and funding mechanisms. And I was really interested in this new concept of building up sources of revenue through inspiring corporate sponsors and creating a community housing trust fund. One of the speakers, and I was speaking with councilmember Agamonte today about this, and it really sparked the interest of most attendees, was the keynote speaker, Carl Gordino, about a fund he co-created in Silicon Valley with this community housing trust fund and the corporate sponsors. And he raised, he, with this fund helped 10,000 families afford homes in high-cost Silicon Valley. So there was really a lot of energy around this topic. And so I think the North Bay Leadership Council is, is going to be tracking on this, and so, you know, I will be bringing more information as that kind of rolls forward. So we're bringing that, and it just really ties into your council goals, so that was very interesting. Second item of interest, last week I met with Supervisor Goran and County Administrator Veronica Ferguson on the Measure A County Roads Tax Measure that's coming forward. And again, you know, reflecting back, the county administrator was quick to acknowledge that Sonoma had the highest rated roads in the county, and thanks to our Measure J funding, and Supervisor Goran said that she was, hoped that Measure A, through Measure A, the county could upgrade the roads around Sonoma. So we talked about Measure A and what that might mean, and she, Supervisor Goran said that the, should Measure A pass, the county is promising to apportion funds to each of the cities based on the SCTA formula. And if that were to materialize, the city is estimated to get around $349,000. That is their general estimate. And, you know, although per the language of the ballot measure, it's a general purpose tax dollars, they, the county would be requesting cities to utilize these funds for streets and roads, or bike paths, or transit-related type projects. So again, Measure A, number one, has to pass, and number two, you know, the funds would not be coming until, obviously, they are earned, so we wouldn't see any results of any kind of Measure A funding until, you know, well into the 15, 16 years. So if, you know, if that were to happen, we would be bringing any project for use of those funds back to the council. We are not, we have not included any projected Measure A funding in the city's 15, 16 budget. But I wanted to bring that report back to you as the conversation with the county administrator and Supervisor Goran. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Givinato. At this point, open comments from the public?
Robert Demler again, sorry. I want to congratulate the council and the city staff on your goals for this year and next year. Outstanding, and particularly, I'm thankful for your interest in the historical aspect. It's our great treasure here. People come for history as well as wine, sometimes I think maybe more. Also, a personal reference. A number of decades ago, I was a U.S. Naval Officer. I didn't look like this. You made a reference to a pet cemetery. I've always been, had a latent interest in the Veterans Cemetery. I do attend functions there. Please don't put the pet cemetery next to us. I would respectfully suggest you consider the Montini Preserve.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, I would like to close this meeting and, well, first of all, I would like to mention that, talk about Memorial Day, next Monday, 11 o'clock, we'll be celebrating at the Veterans Hall.
And Rotary is making lunch.
And Rotary is making lunch, so be sure to attend. And I'd like to close this meeting in dedication of Helen Kaiser, our Vice Mayor, Lori Gallion's late mother. And she was a beautiful woman, and I got to meet her, so that was nice.